Corrine Township, zoning commission will call bill order. If you could stand and do the pledge of allegiance with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I would like to ask everyone to silence their phone, please. Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring.
Here.
Mr. Grody.
Here.
Mrs. Smith. Mr. Taylor. Mr. Westfall.
Here.
Mr. Lauf.
Lauf.
Rich. Mr. Rich. Mr. Lauf, would you please take your seat on the stand, please, to fill in for whichever one you want to fill in for? Next is the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Does anybody have any changes or corrections?
Make a motion, they be approved as written?
No. It's been moved to the second ed. If the April 19, 2016 meeting is to be approved as written, all in favor say aye.
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 I abstain.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is public address. Dear, would you like to make any public address? Okay. Next on the agenda is minor modification to a final development plan, ZA 2014-09 Chick-fil-A 9740, Corrine Avenue. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Sorry. Brought this to you. I'm sorry. I apologize. The HDMI cable is broken on the other table. Brought this to your attention last month with respect to Chick-fil-A and some of the issues that they were having with their parking area. They just opened for business in April and saw a significant issue with respect to the circulation on the property, as well as many accidents surrounding the property with people trying to get in there. So they have come and requested an official minor modification. Made you aware last month, this work has already been completed and the applicant is aware that per your, if you were to choose to disapprove this, they understand that they need to put it back in place, but this really did alleviate many of the issues on the property. And staff is recommending approval of this modification with three variances. The request is to modify a number of the parking spaces from 90 degrees parking to angled 60-degree parking, and this would reduce the number of parking spaces on site from 36 to 30. Quick look at an aerial image, and this is an old aerial, but I will quickly orient you. Corrine Avenue, give me one second, find my laser pointer. Corrine Avenue running north-south across here. To the west here, this is Northgate Mall, Mall Drive. This is where Chipotle currently is, and then this site here is where Chick-fil-A is currently operating, highlighted there in yellow. It is zoned PDB and is surrounded entirely by PDB. Couple of quick shots of the site for you. This is on the eastern side of the site, looking west into where some of this angled parking is already taking place over here, looking towards the mall to the west. This is looking from the south of the site up north. This is the other portion along Corrine Avenue, the Corrine Avenue frontage where the angled parking has already been modified, and then looking in through their drive-through. Tough to see on this image, but this is the originally approved FDP. You can see that they're all 90-degree angled spaces, non-angled spaces, I should say. And this is the proposed modification, highlighted here in yellow, those areas where parking has been angled to 60 degrees. And then the drive aisle, which was originally approved on the FDP as two-way traffic with a variance to 22 feet wide. So this was constructed at just over 22 feet wide, but now the request is that this be one-way parking. Instead of each aisle being exactly 11 feet, one is actually at its narrowest point about 10 and 1/2 feet. So it was approved for two-way traffic, 11 feet on each side. And the one with the one side here, let me highlight it for you. Basically, right here, there's kind of a pinch here. It's about 10 and 1/2 feet wide right here, this one lane. This would be the through lane. Couple things that staff would like to note to you, and they should have been included in your packet, is that there was, per a condition on the FDP approval, in your packet there was a parking analysis that was done by the consultant for the entire parking area of that complex. There is a letter from the landlord's agent, Colliers, with an updated parking agreement. What Chick-fil-A has in place with the landlord is kind of a blanket agreement, so they went back and made sure that they got specific approval for the complex to absorb six additional spaces, because this does put us over the 50% mark with respect to shared parking agreements, which I believe should be noted in the, yes, it is noted in my next slide here, but the original parking requirement was, I believe, 72 spaces on this site, and they were approved in their FDP for 36 spaces. And now they're down to 30 because of the angled parking. The last thing, and I think most importantly, from the township's perspective again, was included in your packet, was a memo from Chief Police, Chief Denny, Mark Denny, sent me a memo describing some of the issues that the police department had upon opening of this site with respect to safety and traffic concerns at and around the site just in that first week. I can tell you from staff's perspective, since this modification has occurred, it has alleviated a lot of the concerns there. It's still a tight site. I'm not sure if we were going to start over, that this is how we would go about choosing to set everything up, but it does, given that this is already on the ground and operating, this may be the best remedy at this point in time. So that said, staff does recommend approval of the minor modification with the following three conditions. Excuse me, these should be variances and not conditions, I apologize. With the following three variances, a variance from section 13.4.2, the length of the parking stalls, which for spaces angled at 60 degrees, it's required that they are 19 feet. The plan currently shows 18 and 1/2 feet in length. A variance from section 13.4.2, drive aisle reduction to 10 and 1/2 feet wide at the narrowest for one-way drive aisles. And a variance from section 13.3.2, a reduction in the number of parking spaces from the previously approved 36 spaces to 30 spaces. Staff would be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Mr. Ferring, do you have any questions?
I think we're sort of at a spot where we don't have any options here, but I think when we go through this again, I was sitting here when this original plan came in, and it was a really questionable plan then, and it bargained, and now it's turned into a mess. And I guess with the extra stalls they took from the shared parking, what you're saying is we're under now for the other buildings as far as the shared?
No, sir. That's why we have the letter from the landlord's agent. They're saying that they are able to absorb those six additional spaces in that overall complex.
And what was the 50%?
50% in our code with, is, I would have to pull up the specific section to read it to you, but essentially, when we have shared parking agreements, our code states that you are really not supposed to go past 50% of the requirements. So you need to carry at least 50% of what our code says, even if you have a shared agreement. We have gone past that 50%.
The spots from the shared parking isn't hurting the 50%. It was for the shared parking of the other buildings. We're still good on the other buildings, I guess is what we're saying.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Grody.
Is the permission from the landlord, is that a permanent position, permission, or is there a limited number of years in there, or a time limitation?
I have not looked at the entire parking agreement. I can provide that to you. I don't think I put that in the letter. I think there's some proprietary information in there. But I do believe that it's the length of the lease of the land, so.
Okay.
I would have to double-check that. I can't say that with certainty without that lease, without that agreement in front of me.
Okay. Anything else? I think it is.
Yeah, I believe it is.
Mr. Lauf.
I don't have any questions. I'll make a comment. From what I hear from neighbors who have been there, I'm less than optimistic that this is going to solve everything. And I continue to hear, even after the modification was made, I guess my encouragement would be when you talk to Chick-fil-A again, tell them, don't be afraid to come back with other ideas. I mean, I recognize that there's not much that can be done. Over time, I suspect everyone will figure out, we can say there's six shared spaces or 36 shared spaces, everybody's going to figure out. You avoid spaces around this building like a plague and park somewhere in the lot. So the problem may solve itself as everybody gets to know it, but you know, if they need something else or have another idea, or the police chief, I'd encourage them to come back, because I've persuaded this alone is going to fix it.
I'll be happy to share that with them.
And it is kind of amazing, because if we were watching that building grow up, my wife and I both said, it's not, that's not a big enough lot for that building. And lo and behold, maybe it's not.
Well, in reality, the drive-through is really the biggest challenge on that.
Right.
Let me go back to this, if you can see on here. This was originally two-way traffic.
No, that would never work.
And then, and then they immediately went one way before they even opened, but it was one way in the other direction. And so those coming off of Mall Drive were going in the exit, and it was creating an issue. And so then there were not only issues at Mall Drive here, there were issues at this portion of the parking lot, and there were actually several issues out further here in the complex, people trying to swing back around to get into that drive-through. So just moving it to the one way in this counterclockwise direction actually did show some progress. It's still a tight site. It's still got some issues, but we did see some alleviation of that with that immediate reversal of that one way.
I mean, just granted, I'm a mere alternate, but if they came back and said, we want to get rid of six more of these diagonal spaces and put plantings in there, and we have agreement from the shared lot, I'd be inclined to say, fine, have at it, because that lot's never full, big lots never full.
No.
And you know, if they said, I want to get rid of spaces along Mall Drive, or I want to get rid of the spaces along the three up there in the corner at Corrine or something, I'd be open to suggestions. I really would.
I agree. They, about noon time, they get pretty busy, and they stay busy until about 10 o'clock at night.
If there's usually space, I mean, you'd never see that lot full. So if they wanted to, if there's some other way, I'd be open to ideas.
Okay. Is everybody done? The chair would entertain a motion to accept a minor amendment to final development plan ZA 2014-09 Chick-fil-A with the variances suggested by staff. Okay, do we have a second?
No, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved to the second ed. If we accept a minor modification to final development plan ZA 2014-09 Chick-fil-A, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring.
Yes.
Mr. Grody.
Yes.
Mr. Lauf.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda is public hearings. We don't have one of those tonight. Informal concept review, we don't have one of those tonight. Any old business?
No, sir.
Any new business?
I think it's administrative. No, sir. Nothing but under doing.
Administration, they do have a suggestion for changes of a, well, two text amendments, two parts of the zoning text. Staff, would you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there are two memos in front of you. The first one I'd like to address has to do with screening of trash receptacles in residential neighborhoods. If you'll recall, we just recently passed a text amendment to the zoning resolution to allow for residential property owners to store their trash receptacles in front of their homes, up against the homes on their driveway or on a hard surface. And this would allow the zoning department to administratively approve zoning permits for a privacy fence if they choose to construct such screening in front of where they're storing these cans, where they're storing these receptacles. At this point, a privacy fence, so 100%, any fence that's approved in the front yard at this point must be 50% open, must be able to see at least 50% through it. This would, is a suggestion from staff, and I think something that the trustees will be on board with, with respect to allowing that screening specific to this reference here to section 12.5.2 for the purposes of screening that. So that would be, basically, it's not required, but we'd like to permit it if people are interested in screening those trash receptacles. So the question before you is whether or not you would like to make a motion to initiate this text amendment, which would push it forward to the Regional Planning Commission for their review and comment back to this spot, this board, and then off to the Board of Trustees. If everyone is in agreement, that would then become a text amendment.
Any questions?
I just have one. It says in here that this is for purposes of screening a waste receptacle. So if I have a garbage can in my front yard, and I want to build a fence four feet high, privacy fence for that, does this give me the availability to fence my whole front yard?
No, sir. It does not.
It must be just, I mean, that's the way this is written in here.
That is why it references specifically section 12.5.2, because in section 12.5.2, it very clearly states that these trash receptacles must be stored up against the house.
Okay. So it would just be specifically for the trash area?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone else?
My question was, maybe a variation on his question, which is, should we put a length, maximum length in there? In other words, you can't possibly need more than, call it 10 feet. And you want to make sure that somebody can't abuse it. If you're comfortable that if I come back and say, well, gee, I'm just screening my trash receptacle, what's the problem? I got a 30-foot fence.
Lot of trash.
Friends, I say, well, I'm just, I'm screening, you know, what's the problem? So I'd be inclined to add a, you know, maximum of whatever.
Is that something, in this form that it's in now, is this something you'd be comfortable with getting comments from the Regional Planning Commission and then adding that type of thing that they're coming?
Well, you know, we'll see what they say, too, but.
Sure.
Have we had any, have we had anybody ask for one of these yet?
So we actually have somebody that constructed one without a permit, and a neighbor complained that there was a fence in the front yard. In my personal opinion, in my professional opinion, it really cleaned up. It actually, it looked very nice. They spent, they spent some time and money on making sure that it looked very nice. Technically, per our code, I cannot, at this point, write a permit for that. So this would not require this to happen, but if somebody wants to make this effort, they would be allowed to.
Anyway, my inclination would be to stick in something so somebody can't abuse it, more than just a reference to the other section.
Anyone else?
In the event that this is eventually passed with whatever language that we finally decide on, how will that be promulgated to the citizens and perhaps them encouraged to put up screening? How will that, will the citizens be made aware of this?
Not via any other means than our typical notification, which would happen, there would be a legal notification in the paper before both the zoning commission meeting as well as the Board of Trustees meeting, and then obviously, these meetings are also televised. But beyond that, staff does not typically do any sort of outreach unless somebody's coming in and asking these kinds of questions, so.
Any other question? The chair would entertain a motion to initiate the text amendment to modify the language to, I mean, address amendment, say, approval of zoning certificates for four-foot privacy fences to act as screening devices for trash receptacle residential zone.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved to the second ed. If we initiate the amendment, text amendment to change the section 12.8.3 to say that there could be a four-foot privacy fence to screen off trash receptacles. Okay, there's another one?
The second one in front of you is a bit lengthier, but what we're looking to do at this point is really to update an entire section with respect to procedures and the difference between major and minor modifications. I think we've discussed this briefly before in some meetings, but this would, the text that you have in front of you actually comes mostly from the way Anderson Township addresses major and minor modifications. What this would do would be to actually create three different types now. There would be a minor, a major, and then a substantial. Minor modifications would be able to be handled administratively by your zoning staff. Major modifications would only come through this zoning commission, and then substantial modifications think like we had, think we had a PDB or FDP, and then somebody wants to come in and completely redo the site. That would be something that would go all the way, run the gamut with Regional Planning Commission, Zoning Commission, and Board of Trustees. That's the idea behind this, and our hope is that you will initiate this so that we can start this discussion, get feedback from regional planning, as well as get more feedback from trustees on how they feel about allowing staff specifically to have that administrative authority in those minor modifications. So that's where the most, you'll find the most detail in this is going to be that paragraph A1 with respect to what would be considered administrative type of reviews.
Any questions?
If I could add, this is actually, staff did go back and forth on whether or not to add the substantial modification. Did we want to just keep major and minor? The way that this, the way that our existing text is Chick-fil-A became, came before you as a minor modification with three variances in there. If this does not have that substantial request involved in it, that would have to come through as a major modification and run the entire gamut of regional planning because of the variance requests. That's not something we could do administratively. So if we don't have that in between of just the zoning commission with the major modifications, we either have all administrative, or we have the entire five-month process of running it all the way through all of the different reviews, so.
So the idea would be a minor, which would not produce additional variances, would be handled by staff. A major would be one that requires action by the commission, but not the full monty. And then a substantial modification would be, all right, now let me try to understand. I'm looking here, trying to read this. In two-sentence English, what makes something substantial?
Think brand-new development plan. We're close enough to it that there is.
So I bought this place, I'm going to go sight-clear everything, and.
That would certainly, that would certainly fall into that category, yes.
I figured that place we were looking at the zoning on, by where that supply place used to be.
The old western home town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, something like that. It's pretty clear to me that if somebody comes in there, that's probably what's going to happen.
Now, that happens to be single-letter zoning, but if that were a planned district, yes. Yes. And that, the way this is written, the way I understand this to be written, that is something that the zoning commission could, if they had something, if you had something in front of you that you felt like needed the whole review, we could push back and start from the beginning. So you have that authority. Additionally, the major modification recommendation in here would turn, would turn your modification meetings from public hearing, or excuse me, public meeting to public hearing, particularly because of those variance requests, making sure that we get the notification out there.
And we would have it in our power, if something comes to us as a major modification, and we say, no, 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 that's, this is too big a bite, we would have the power to make it a substantial modification.
That is the way that I interpret what is written here, and it's certainly something, if it's, if it is a concern, if we want to spend more time with that language, we can certainly do that. Again, this is just to start the, start the ball rolling to get to.
I'm not implying, I'm using this to start the process. I just wanted to understand.
Sure.
Should I be sitting here when it comes back? I don't know what I'm looking for.
Mr. Grody, do you have any questions? Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to move, to make, to initiate a text amendment to modify the language, to address modifications through an approved preliminary or final development plan, and to re, to re-establish major, I mean, minor, major, and add significant to it. Can we have a roll call, please? Oh, wait, we have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved to the second ed. That we initiate a text amendment to modify the language, to address modifications, to approval of preliminary or final development plans. Can we have a roll call, please?
We didn't vote on the first one. Are you doing both of them together?
Are we? Can we?
You may want to just do them separately.
Okay. Let's do this one first. We already got it out there. We have a roll call on this one.
Mr. Ferring.
Yes.
Mr. Grody.
Yes.
Mr. Lauf.
Aye.
Mr. Westfall.
Aye.
Now, is the motion out there for the other one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, can we have a roll call on the other one, please?
Mr. Ferring.
Yes.
Mr. Grody.
Yes.
Mr. Lauf.
Aye.
Mr. Westfall.
Aye.
Both motions carried. Is there any announcements? Next meeting is June 21st. Do we have anything in for yet?
I believe we do, but I didn't look at the board before we came, before we came in here.
That's a question. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a question.
Yes.
Some months back, I think prior to your coming, we approved the final development plan or what have you for Huntington Bank going in by Northgate Mall. Any idea where that is or what the status of it is?
No, I don't have an answer to that question now. I know we are still hoping that they get moving on that sometime in the near future. Anytime that I've heard it come up, the date just keeps getting pushed back. I don't think we have a realistic expectation for a start date at this point.
Would they be getting close to where that might expire?
More than likely they are, and I can take a look at that. I'll take down some notes, and we'll make sure that we address that in the coming month, and I'll get you a date for when we expect that to expire.
Okay.
The challenge with, with that particular property, if I'm remembering correctly, is that all of North. that all of North Gate Mall and its outlots are associated with one preliminary development plan. So the way that that has been working is, like I said, this is if I'm remembering correctly, every time any FDP is coming in on any of those outlots, it's not, that PDP is not considered to be expired. So they may be able to kind of ride that wave a little longer than a typical development because they're all associated with the same PDP.
They have a year.
They would have a year on their FDP, but like I said, every time another FDP comes in.
Oh, I see, so. Any other one sort of?
It updates, it updates the FDP. Yeah, that's kind of how it's been handled to work with the overall redevelopment of that entire mall area.
Another item is several months ago, when Dick's Sporting Goods came to us and we approved their moving to a new facility, I remember very vividly, they said they were going to use the same letters off the existing sign on the new building. The new building has new letters, and the old building has the existing letters.
I can certainly put that into our system and get our enforcement officer working on that.
They look, the little, the new ones look a little bigger than the old ones.
Okay. I can, I can look into that. I can see what we can do about that.
Because he said that they were going to use them and put new illumination in or something like that.
LED illumination, yeah.
Okay. I can look into that.
Okay.
How's all the, the other things are going? The tire company, are they making progress?
They, that property just closed, I believe it was last week. Had some challenges with respect to some property maintenance over there, just in the transition, but they're working on it. I believe they're looking to break ground as soon as possible. So they are moving, they did get their approvals, was it last month, Christina?
Last month.
Should we ask them to ship the palm trees to Mr. Westfall's home for mounting there?
I'm going to stay out of that one.
That's his favorite landmark.
You need, you need a permit to do that.
I have. I, I'm never, that, that was, that's my legacy in Colrain Township, is those palm trees in front of Show Me. But I did get it cut down from three to one, and the heights are cut down. And I, I see that the Goodyear Building is coming along quite nicely.
It is moving, yes.
It looks, it looks a lot nicer there without the old McDonald's building there, since they tore that down. Things are progressing. I think we're doing, I, you know, I think we're doing okay. I like the way North Gate Mall's turning out. I was, I'm very happy that I was involved with Stone Creek. I think we hit a home run on that one. And, you know, I think we're, I think we're reviving, revitalizing Colrain Township. Now, we got to do something with the houses.
We're working on that as well, with respect to vacant, vacant foreclosed.
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please. Yikes.